Okay, so we're gonna get insert our meeting, um, we're gonna start at five to three. And so we're all to order, um, so, um, you could use simple agents?
Sure.
Thank you. Can we roll call these?
Absolutely, District one Marie Derson.
Yes, here.
District two Nelska is absent, um, district three Ciargzola is absent, before Alana. Um, she did present, I don't have the microphone.
Yes, I do.
And Marispani, Veda Parkman.
Thank.
Pain, his school society. Microphone.
Use your microphone.
Thank you.
That's how I do it.
Thank you.
We have four. Thank you so much.
Have me courted.
So, um, uh, we need to have an ignition certificate of staying for March or May 14th, 25th, Parks Recreation, uh, Commission Regular Resting.
Just need a motion to acknowledge the certificate second.
Can I motion?
Don't move.
Second. All in favor? Thank you.
For, and you wanna vote to this?
Yes. So just need to have.
So if you have any questions to them, you can again, um, uh, need a motion to opt in then again.
Motion. Make a motion. Second.
Second.
Favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So moving to discussion items. And that be. Mr. Loop. Missed out too. We get.
Hi, well, as senior plan, I'm actually filling for Ariel's today, but we are just here to get form direct from commission to bring an item to the board supervisor to direct them to make the San Ono interpretive sign ad hoc as you requested last meeting. So I need you today is to sign two of your parks recreation questionnaire that you would like to on the committee, uh, let you know the other stakeholders you want to have participate in the committee. And we're gonna take request of the board ad hocs to be approved created by the board supervisors. So I'm looking now for two commissioners who want on this, uh, ad hoc committee for the interpretive signs.
Volunteers? You do.
Um, there'll be, uh, semi frequent meetings, um, potential on some, we haven't fully looked at the build that would be, but, uh, who would then be needing to look at type of interpretive signs you want San Ono? So air presented the meeting and I read off her presentation with me, um, that there's these specific signs on parks and, um, between your imp almost say they shoot folks on any acts of agriculture or anything else that represent the county. So basically you'll be meeting a group potentially subsequently to create these interpretive signs for the park.
Okay. And we, is there people we can bring to the ad hoc that are part of the?
So the last.
Because I think having somebody like, um, um, individual Marie that have more historical, um, that they know more about what San Ono would be out than, um, be some of us up here. I mean, I'd be like commission on ad hoc, um, but. Yeah, I think we'd have a job to get some others with more regarding about histories, I don't know.
Oh, so in terms of thing, uh, rectings tonight, if you don't have the two park supervisors are gonna be on this, I don't think you can take items to board, so I'll have them back our next regular scheduled meeting.
Okay, so it's gonna, it's gonna be myself and, and Alana that be part of this, because we can't, what was, we'll just be in people that will have us. I mean, see, that'd be the way we would do this.
Staff also helping out, I'm sure that will present options to you and get your input as well. Uh, so reach patient at the last meeting, you also petition potentially tribes, there is a SIF tribe you wanna check to. I know Amamson tribal land is really been the area, I'm not sure about the other tribes though off the top of my head. Pacific contacts or individuals.
So my daughter works for a tribe somewhere, so I can ask her because it was all different regions, so I can see what closest to us, so.
Okay, so.
I can do that.
I, for right now, at least for the local tribes.
Yeah.
And then we'll determine later.
Perfect.
Okay, so, and then I just need motion for staff to bring this, and I'm for the supervisor to create ad hoc.
Uh, I motion to.
I'll make a motion to bring the board of supervisors.
Aye. All in favor?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Gonna be learning experience, learn about the history of, of Los Angeles, that's kinda get aside, nice. Okay, so the next one would, now Mr. Loop there.
John Noon, Christianers, yes, I'm still a public administrator, and I'll provide an update to you on various park projects this evening, actually. And we will start with, that's, um, the folks in back, can you up the PDS invasion please? Great, very much. Alright, so, um, actually made progress on most of the projects, actually, so, that's, um, good news is the remodel, uh, the bathrooms, the small built playground, that model has been complete. And it's now open, that's when the teams or any activity folks are there, open the fields to the equity, in the night, hopefully they close the rooms, um, to add activity. So good news, respect that bathroom, there is a little remaining funding for, uh, are we were approved bathrooms at Better Park? And so with remaining funding, we are gonna make a free pair across the street, the picnic tables, because it's pretty old, uh, so before leaks a little more, we'll be repairing that roof. We've started to install partitions at those rooms for, I don't know if it was the women, I think we're doing it first, good. And then we put in new doors on bathroom, that bathroom, well, that bathroom is located kind of between the tables across the street from Allfield in July 25th. And then over the store park, I'll pause, and I'll ask the mission if you'd like to keep going, but for the store park, um, we found the thistle mill from our near to actually install new bathrooms over the beach hall, um, and, uh, the large building where they have the vegetables and fruits and stools.
He got it.
Uh, yeah, that's right, exactly, um, thank you all. So, um, next to, between those buildings, just sign with, with us, new restroom, they actually have bathrooms, or maybe showers, so that green fence, historical folks, they'll take showers, um, in that bathroom, that'll be a thing. So we hope, hope to, uh, get in connection this summer for that, and we have coordinated some historical park folks and kind of decide what it's gonna like, those restrooms and showers. So once we do this thistle mill, they can put a bid and hopefully start construction, maybe year forms. Also at the historical park, we're on final step of becoming an official pub drink water system, so this department of drink water determined that to the number of years of the park. We have to, um, have a water system certified and become a public system, it's a good thing overall. So we've been, um, in a set of existing water system, lattles and, and, and just all pipes installed upon, which is well there as well. And so we're just to read the applicable permit thistle mill, our consultant is to be here this week, once I review that, then we'll go to state, I'll review it, and then just basically it provides, uh, puts this on the rate date, and, and again, we've been monitoring every month the well and the water. Except for the hardness of water, the back contaminants, um, in the water, which is good news. So what probably end up is, we're putting a water meter on the wall, we're gonna base a filtration unit, filter some of the hardest have the water, and step this to super to the state, and then two is install water meter infiltration it. And it'll just be better outside of the water and, and will be able essentially for public, so it'll be a thing. And then at that point, we'll probably open it to on site, to carry, and family, because great, maybe actually uses bottled water to peace, so to speak, so, so that's on track as well. And I'll pause there, let's shoot me to go in presentation, ask questions at the end.
I, I just want to say, excited about water, oh my gosh, that's, that's a trigger, to be able to have drink water.
You've actually go to a park and drink water.
Oh my gosh, that's like, that's so amazing, I appreciate it.
Yeah, good thing, so.
Uh, and then I have a question about Better Park, so of course I always do, um, um, any remaining funds that can use for baby's bathrooms, or anything that we could do over there?
A bit, um, we're more than one to work to sit in the folk that, uh, received Ruth, did verify that the county does over those bathrooms, but again, I think they were having some sewer issues maybe, and we're more than have to help with that, if you chat to us. But we have the tendency, we're using remaining funds.
Okay.
With twenty or thirty K of the rest of the cross street with county restitution bills.
Okay, so that bathroom is C, I thought it was all county, and how, so, because I thought that, I mean, we'd reach out county at this meeting, ask for assistance, and, um, but we were understanding that it's still, and why is the city over C?
They just disagree, um, I, I don't know, we don't, we just don't, like, it doesn't, um.
So.
Reach out to city parks director again, see if we can do Bay Ruth, and or off the record, off, after, I mean, if you find, we'll be, I can, I can reach the Ruth manager if they need assistance.
Because they aim to the median access.
Right, so afterwards, we reached, just, those wouldn't want us to do, it's up to the bathrooms, but I don't think receiving, no.
Okay, you need permission, okay.
Yeah, so I'll just, you can help out, but.
Okay. We did know that the city was in charge of that, I've never known that Bay Ruth was overseen by the city, they've been.
But that area, I think the teams, I think the teams contain that building.
Right.
Um, long story short, help if, I'll, you know, I'll reach out to the manager, I think I have content, so I'll say, let us know how to help you.
Okay, I appreciate it, you, I thought that was what we'd like, but, but thank again for water, it has been years in the key, and so you're up for taking the thoughts, the snooze I had today.
You bet.
But thank you.
Alright, so, oh, we'll start there, so, um, Beach was a kind of real golden profit community group, I think most are familiar with. They receive grant for leave, fifty thousand dollars to install shades, the shade structure, and see parking benches at the north, there's kind of existing the ground area. So they received half the money they need to install those rims, um, shade structures, the kind of large guy. And then county supervisor, county advisor signed MOU two months ago to provide their fifty thousand dollars to the project, so that it has approximately a hundred thousand dollars. And so as today, we're actually looking, probably just give the money to Reach, and so the project can move for, um, this summer, I think, uh, Reach for, hopefully probably looking at kind of the structure you want implement, I think seen some graphics, so good things. And, um, hopefully can help them that for the summer as well, let's make that a nicer with some shins and shins, and it's a good project there.
Super excited.
Yeah, very good.
I'm just waiting for them.
Okay, so, we started this one, we would call the phase of Sunny Park, and what means, jokes here is the neighborhood itself, it's a citizen's. Has a lot of, I think it's three phases approximately, it was said D to the county or that neighborhood. And finally started the project, and the first phase is to put fence on the entire project, for reasons, the first D, but when our character starts with the park, will have a less chance of their equipmentings to be vandalized. But main thing for the doing, installing fence first is just for a little bit, we're safe from, as the area between the river and states. And so, um, that fence is almost complete, and the next phase, which hopefully will start in August, is to time the commission regarding park, and what's, what kind of surface is around playground areas? Answer is, in half inch porous rough surface, where it looks like stages, which play when you're at a kind of rubberist foam cushion, and then below that is some shotgun, but basically, it's a seven, eight inch cushion of burl. The top is like poured place, it's a half thick around the playground is. And second question, why they're not gonna be restrooms installed? And the answer is, oh, it might at this time, but, uh, we don't plan to install restroom, restrooms to attract, attend from flux to the river, and so, um, because parks, they'll be monitored by the sheriff, it, we just have to have the rest there for those reasons. And one, the park is really next to residential neighborhood, but one is adjacent to residential neighborhood, River View States, and so other folks just had a plan agreement for their restroom needs, and I'll show you just a couple diagrams of the final destruction docs, uh, send them in a little here. So, I know it's a really clear by park, um, to the park in the neighborhood, and that's gonna consist of playground structures and picnic tables, and man trail that heads to, um, an asphalt board skirt with some holes, a two side, X for gold, excuse. And so, it's, the domain is about C by twenty, so multi bis court, um, can be essentially anybody, and hopefully whoever can, a little more work funding with actually providing nets and funds for the sports court, so, um, that's the park that's actually located in the neighborhood. To the right, we have a park that's located on what the old hospital road, and really most hospital ridge, uh, it has playgrounds, swings, some tables, and, um, just kind of, it's a little, and there is for chickens, and then split wood, and it's just be all around one, because. To it, a wood fence just does kind of, and that's installing a crosswalk that comes from the neighborhood down below, which will actually have library kiosk, which is a little mini library with, that's kind of an eighteen with books, that look kind of south of this, uh, named park. And this is for books, this general area, uh, we'll get psyched on that, so, um, yeah, so those are the parks that we call Sunny Side Park. Current cost of it is about one seventy million dollars, um, we before it was a grant, and the rest will come from park impact, and so I'll pause outside, and then we can go review, and I'll pause questions or comments.
Is there any questions? Anybody a question?
Uh, did the impact fees they provide for maintenance or placement items?
I wish, so, these fortunately are building new things, and once build these parks, we do the lighting and servicing improvements at Betts Park. Um, we do just the first phase of Riverview Region Park, our park impact fees will be depleted at point, um, and maintenance costs for going minutes, um, is provided. Now, good news is for both Sunny Estates and for, um, River View, that both folks, they don't have any impact fees, the impact fees are a one M fee, pay win, build home, and they're typically four or five thousand dollars, and that goes into what they call a new impact. That goes with the two parks, which doesn't really apply to any of the parks. Side Estates, there is a FD community facility district, actually an annual assessment, and perennial assessment will have two minutes, their reuse stays, they're not high from back when, they also have a small annual sentence, even the kind of what they self help kind of neighborhood, uh, so they do have a small maintenance fee. It's like built up years, parks can still get built for them, so, um, long shorts, two assessments will help for to maintain two parks. And on this note, for information purposes, San Oaks, building new dog park, and a new kind of linear park that we use as a marketplace, and you're gonna be kind of interpret science for those parks, or going on that. That two parks also have an annual estimate for all the homes at San Oaks, and so will their annual assessment to maintain the two parks. So, the way we're gonna do it on a more current basis to maintain parks in a good way, so, so some projects that do have maintenance fees, they come the essence of the, so.
Thank you.
You bet.
And, so, are you be hiring people to do that, because are, are you being from our other parks to do that? Because then our other parks are gonna kind of, often there.
Excellent, so, um, the maintenance will be formed by contractor with the sentence, I, the mid, a work supervisor facility to address needs, you just, and I'm very certain that position will not be approved by board supervisor, the having budget, people have our budget. I'm to go, I was really hopeful I was gonna be through, a couple weeks ago, I'm not, but I, I've submitted a request, and so that's, that is.
You can't always stretch Luke back for so long.
But, and, right.
Luke's gonna retire, and then you have to have ten people.
You're absolutely, and I was hoping this other person, Luke could constrain purse, because Luke knows all the bones rates to speak, Eric Simpson's all say that, so, that was the plan, but again, not to uphold that, that shouldn't be approved, um, by the.
But that need get approved, it really does, because it's, you're not gonna maintain any of the parks, because the impact, all the money's gonna go to new parks, and then our little parks, this park and historical park, and it's aside, so just talk to your supervisors and say something that's really needed, because. Per the way he work right now, he's gonna retire, and we're getting big trouble.
He will retire in the near future, hopefully a few years now, and I know his support staff is workers that have committed misdemeanor to have crimes, and he gabs those workers from the prison every week. You know, three, four a day, if he's like, for, so that community is successfully, that is force, and so we're stretching ourselves as we can, so.
And he's amazing, so, you know, I mean, you're gonna have to give like employee of the year, truly, give him, give him the chip some from us, I mean, if we make a certificate of attempt, I'm telling you, that is a real hard word, so.
That's a good idea, if you remind me instead, please remind me, maybe kind of play recognition.
He really does, because.
He did amazing.
Does, he's always, okay, never, no, I can't, always, okay, so, he needs, I mean, I'll bring something, just need something to say, you're amazing, so.
That's a good idea.
So can actually do that at this commission, if we'd like, we could do, um.
Like a clemation?
In acknowledgement, and we can invite, um, we could invite him to respite.
I would that.
That's a great.
Would like to, would you like direct us to that at this regular scheduled meeting?
Yeah, please, is it, can a motion to direct to, um, to, what's Vasquez for him? I need a first, so we can do that at our next meeting.
Make a motion to the, to recommend that be owner, be Vasquez, as, uh, what's the name of the boy, maintaining the park throughout the county?
I'm gonna get a second, thank you so much, because you just don't realize how amazing this pin is.
Was it all those ever?
Okay.
Okay.
Wonderful, thanks so much for that mission, I didn't know.
That was your mission, that's good, so.
Well, as you say too, that there needs to be a transition period so he can train, because I know you can't just throw somebody into a position, say, you know where all the valves that pipe send are.
Depends when you have a person charged.
Go wrong, a person has to know.
Was to do, he'll just go to a turn thing, and it works, and he needs to teach the other to do that.
Or definitely.
Right, what to do, he's kicking, yes. So thank you, thank, that's amazing, excited.
Me too.
Then maybe he'll stay a little longer.
That's right. Alright, um, see, if you want to talk about our last large park, Ruby Real Park, which we have started as well, and Q back for that, okay, there. Uh, so, last we discussed, our favorite here is Cortina Tiger Omnis, and as of now, um, CDW has determined, as of today, that will new purchase two, two million mitigation costs offsite areas. Uh, to provide fifty years of Cortina Tiger salmon habitat at a place in Spartan Ranch, which is essentially a big K area for a lot of the critters. So the project not budgeted have two point two million dollars, so we have a few options, those are with a call of void submission, and void submission is, you have on site, have valid by all distance, doing survey, also special, it's, and there is where salamanders might be, we haven't seen you, but might they be there? Um, and then you do protocol just to make sure if they do here, you don't perform a bake, which make life of a salamander, so, there, and that's, that alone is approximately two hundred, two hundred thousand dollars, you have funded for the park, two point million, um, currently is not in our account for a company fund, so, a few options. We can spend, and this has a, this kind of determined with the last few minutes, so two point two. So option one, spend do races, and we put a, a kind of a defense or a park, and so often, about the space is a couple hundred feet, we actually did a whole, put a spell bucket, actually during this, this season or four months, we just checked bucket and see any CS, some managers, um, drop into the buckets. And if they do, I'll tell you what we do on it, but if none pop in bucket, then the first in, take out fence bucket, come back next year, next November, defend and put the buckets in, hopefully CT drop into the buckets there. So we go two seasons without a TTS, and the two point two million go away. If we have ETS dropping the buckets, our step will be to test them. Testing for is if they're purebred California salmon or hybrid. There are hybrids, and they bred other non pure ETS, and their DNA is a certain percentage of hybrid, and the hybrids are actually detrimental to pure ETS, because they go habitat, and they just take over on breeding areas, hybrids do. So even EDFW, don't know the answer, but there's some DA, technically, it's fifty percent hybrid, forty nine percent bred, we're not gonna make use of the whole point two in, it might last, because you don't pure it on your site. Or if it's, if they're a hundred percent bred, they could, well, don't have, and found in pure breeds, the point two in could possibly say go to zero, so that one process. This parallel process we're working on, we've been testing two years, is we met with EW at the end of April, we expressed concerns with past, and we asked to just assess, you know, if those mitigation areas are, is needed, we kind of submitted, say, kind of minimum mitigation is, and boy, we detailed that, but we, we made it sort of the last cost that would approve based on their input. And said, just say, you know, our, does it two point million, please leave these costs in raising, we can raise them for, in a perfect, well, case scenario, they would reduce it about to one, 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 and maybe fifty percent, I don't know if that's gonna happen, but asking the question. The other little try to take is, we're gonna present whole scenario to our supervisors, and our lead the fills, and John heard, saying, okay, if you wanna build park and not wait in their tears, some, can you help us, our salamander issue, because. The fish and wilds are determined, they don't think there's salmon there, California, CW, a little more stringent in US fish and wildlife, or salamanders, US fish and wildlife is a focus, right, like frogs, that's what really, PDFW is more concerned with the salamanders, and so. The federal government said, we don't think there's any two thousand, and you'll be fine, which was very encouraging, CFW said, we think they'd be there. Our argument is, we have a large wide river on the south in the weather park, and when it's raining, the salmoners can't cross there, and when dry, it's not conducive for salamanders to cross, because it's large, India, that salamander don't really like to, they have no motivation to cross over when it's dry. So we have a large bear on the south and the west, north and east, we have, I don't know, both our homes and streets, and things like that, and then beyond there, where they have a fat salamander, so, this is limited, evidence and opinion to say, ponds are here, these two bears over at home here, and then the park in here. evidence and opinion to say, hey, ponds are here, these two bears are over at home here, and then the park in here, so we return to the fills to talk to people of my grade, say maybe can recess the chewing, so we're in that strategy as well. Stop boring my sanders, just gonna move in here, just steps, but um let's see, we did make a big grant months ago, actually number, uh submitted a ten dollar grant for showing the park, which is basically a construction of everything, till talking months, um and it does kind of nifty community outreach and education and bringing folks in, especially students to educate them on more sustainable, and just came about in general, so awesome, I don't know where that grant's at, because um with the current uh political climate, so, but the grant submitted, and so items that we still need to find that ten million include some additional restrooms, the extension restroom for the softball fields, potential amphitheater, um they're been green in the high school, that's for bocci bar ports, the botanical gardens, softball play area, nature area, and just landscape engagement, we talked about last time. Um so all those things could fund it as a final phase of the grant, and as we get through the sound issue, we've talked about reaching out to folks for planting and to park and some quantity of that, so that's still going on back into um that status, uh River View Regional Park, a lot of for questions. You bet, if you want your microphone, yes, we are, um yeah, no, still waiting, the question, uh we're in for back from CJ, yeah, just submit an extra maintain, you see GW, it's about eight, ten due fees, in addition, we're getting what they call a fact sheet, a face sheet, submit the politicians, uh we submit a bunch of information to the politicians, and we're submitting more piece of document to them, with some documents that if they can with folks and perhaps um help us with salamanders, so that's kind of status.
Yeah, just see for information, the land trust, uh local land trust got me for Fish and Life for mitigation, we scoped out mostly in South County near Pinnacles, uh probably over five thousand acres of really good habitat down there, and we're currently engaged with an praiser, determine the value of habitat.
That's great, because I think Paul's getting, there's a potential, maybe, that that'd be, you know, salamander mitigation areas, kind of just how, which even potential, that's very news, so please keep.
Because we only have a mini three hundred acres, but there's a whole bunch of potential acres down there, it may be cheaper than the Santana mitigation bank too.
Absolutely, yeah, Spartan Ranch, there's about five thousand acres, we need probably fifty acres, and I was a little bit let up, but forty four acres, so yeah, there was five acres near Pinnacles, hopefully we let's expand and be a good.
So I just have a question, and this is down the line, but um um the option for different areas, um the only request I have is that nobody takes ownership of the field or any part of that, is road, is gonna be a rotating addition kind of thing, the reason I say this is because there's there's a little money in there that were named in different areas, and it didn't be, it's 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 a K park, and I say in the park, but different softball, it's like that. Know the writing that goes on softball, and so uh I don't want to have ownership of that, I want it to be, will we rent it out instead of um, will you tear it and put your mind into keeping it, because that's where we're in trouble before.
Uh that's a good point, and um internally, we talked about to just try to pass the county park assessment and charge household thirty dollars a year, some a lot of money, even thirty dollars a year, um that we can maintain, you know, historical veterans park, re- re- region park, and even some in the other parks, though we've talked about that, so that would hopefully be, I don't know how realistic that is, but right now we have this fifty acre park, um two softball fields, and we do maintain a question, you rent out the part, I mentioned, we truly have no staff, there are um.
Right, I understand.
Um but we.
Moving forward, we will have to ponder this, because once you're in that game, never go out, and they're gonna say, oh, I've done this to the to the field, and so mine, and we can't have, because then it ain't meets other people, and it's it's gone back and forth so many times at Vets Park, that it's it's messy, it's a pool to get into, and there's anyway, we have a figure, I said my talks, but um not to a lot of municipalities, if one group, two groups take over the softball, and we're building this community, as it is, that's, there are no ways for people to go play softball. The ideal thing would be for people to have practice field, ideally would people just go just there, and um if they rent time, that that'd be the best bet, you know, but um I think that it'd be like cut off to the park where you go practice, so.
Hundred percent, yeah, I mean, there might be sometimes in the meetings where such and such entity wants to, a field or.
It's not a minute.
Hall Street, you know, you do a great job, but you're saying they need to be the pub.
It there, we have to have, because that's the big complaint with habits park, is that it's not public, people understand that some gotta pay for maintenance, and so um and liability on it, the extent and that, and why is there, is why do you lock some, it's a public park, it's a K park, it's not really a county park, it's a different entities. And so we need space for it's to practice, some is for the young kids to practice, and that should goal these softball fields, and so um that's the only ask I have when we for along, I mean, I, we have to find the maintenance, but further along, to me, it's important for it to be a public place, so.
Absolutely, sounds good.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
So on this commission, we don't really have, um we have a for for um like what it done, kind of check upon the grant, can we add that into the agenda?
Absolutely, I'm so sorry, I think I was supposed to add, no, yeah, uh just go ahead and we'll call it um, we'll call it a section of anything um before ornament, and then um just a a counter updates.
Right, okay, that would appreciate this, so um commission dates, and then the other thing, uh not that I am just gonna be all presentive, and my status kind of issue a bit going one, one or session to the other. Um do I need, we need to open to chair, like what did we put that on to um next agenda, or is that?
Wait, what do you, oh, because we already thought at February meeting.
I just want to make this mission to have to do, at some point we're to vote on a chair.
We did at February meeting, it's you and Nell Skemia.
Okay, remember, so I'm checking, okay, because last, last meeting, we were a little confused, we had to do that at Vets, so um and then if we can add the updates, and then you church items on there, please.
Do um do you want to separate, or you can do church items under counter updates?
We've got that, just one, yeah, just one.
Well, if you want now, can go in commission update, what I'll do is I'll update the agenda minutes to reflect such.
Okay, thank you, okay, so um, so do you have any dates?
Not as well.
Do you need dates? Dates?
Um just the one highlight was very happy with landing date with Alder, the a schedule to the historic Artie or Art Society with uh the historian, the National Park Service, to get a a brief story of South County before Pinnacles designated as a monument, that got canceled because of travel restrictions of federal employees. So that will be whole on the agenda, and I let people know when that comes, because it uh I was very happy when we attended the um opening of the new East Side Intranation, that that's uh my family when we came from Michigan back in the late eighteen hundreds, settled in the valley area, and uh the historian told the story of the depopulation of the indigenous people occurred a couple hundred years before the settlers came to the missionary mostly over in Hollywood, so it relieved me a lot that wasn't my ancestor.
Was intense, very nice, nice.
Anyway.
Nice, um and so with that, one thing we had, uh is we'd have the carnival this weekend for high school, looked like it was very packed. Um I'd go and do a walk through, because just curious to see how they laid everything out, a few things that might have to change, um because of uh way thing moving forward, having um simple on the fries, they put a fence around our inside fence was nice, because you can go up way and come up, and it they did a great job. Um happened either when the the health inspector was there, and he was very happy, it's me very happy, um and I think we just have to do a job of changing this block, because of there's outs vendors were blocking the entrance, and so um in the sidewalks, we had a park, the manager for the amusement, Fettler amusement, that no vendors are out in the park, bike can be on that walk and across the streets of the city, but they blocked the the entrance on sidewalk, which was a drawing hazard, because they could, excuse, you could see around them, because balloons were big, the things are sound, which I think is some interest to, would be helpful, because it was king of mind, because we could see, and so, but on that, I think enjoyed it, it was, you're asking, it's, I think everyone just to really enjoy it. Um and that's it, me, so, I think. Okay, so um with that, I motion to adjourn.
That's it.
Oliver?
Aye.
Okay, so we're gonna at six on TV, thank you so much for attending.